Good morning. I'm sorry for the delay, but I wish to call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. It is Wednesday, December the 11th, 2024. Present in the Nat U Hill Room are Commissioner Lee Jones and myself, Penny Githens. And with that, I'd like to ask Commissioner Jones to read our public statement.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source excuse.
And we stand in support of our public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. This is a very hard day for both of us and for many of those in the room because yesterday we lost a very beloved colleague, Cheryl Munson. And so I'd like to just ask everybody for a minute.
Yes, I'd like to move that we remove items I and J.
I'll second that. So the motion is to remove both items I and J from our agenda. Do we need public comment on this, Mr. Cockrell?
I don't think you do. You're amending your agenda.
Okay, thank you. With that, I have some too. With that, I'll call for a vote to amend our agenda, taking off items I and J. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. With that, we'll move on to a proclamation that we have today. This is for Reeds Across America. Whereas in 1992, Maine businessman Morrel Webster began a wreath laying ceremony in Arlington National Cemetery. And beginning in 2007, the national nonprofit Reeds Across America was founded to expand this practice and lay wreaths at the tombs of military servicemen and women throughout the United States. Reeds Across America seeks to remember the fallen, honor those who serve, and teach the next generation about the true cost of freedom. In 1921, the first Reeds Across America ceremony in Monroe County was held at the Rose Hill Cemetery. And following a noon event at Elks Lodge, number 445, this year, Reeds Across America volunteers will be holding ceremonies at multiple locations in Monroe County to remind themselves and others of this year's theme, "Live with Purpose." Now therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, proclaim December 14th, 2024 as Reeds Across America Day in Monroe County, proclaimed this 11th day of December 2024 by the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. And with that, we'll move on to department updates. We have here, oh, Mr. Miller, sorry.
I wanted to thank the Commissioners for the proclamation today, and I wanted to express my condolences for the friends, family, and colleagues of Councilperson Munson. And if it's okay, I was going to tell you the other locations where Reeds Across America will be. The main event and ceremony will be at the Elks Lodge on Saturday, December 14th at noon, followed by wreath laying at Rose Hill at 12:30. Valhalla Memory Gardens' Elks Rest wreath laying will be at 12:30. Unionville Cemetery Association will have wreath laying beginning at 1:30. Shiloh Unionville will have wreath laying beginning at 2:00 PM. And Shiloh Jasper will be at noon. On Sunday, Gosport will have a wreath laying ceremony at 11:00 AM, and Burgoon Cemetery will have one at 1:00 PM. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for all of your efforts in our community.
Very welcome.
With that, we'll move on to department updates. Is Ms. Kelly with us?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Just a few updates for you. Emergency department visits for COVID-like illnesses have continued to increase over the past week, but we are still seeing wastewater concentrations trending down. Flu activity is currently listed as low. And as a reminder, our public health clinic does have vaccines available for all ages. You can call 812-353-3244 for an appointment.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No.
I don't either. Thank you for that update, Ms. Kelly. We also have, I believe, an update from our surveyor, Tron Wright Randolph.
Hello.
Tron with us? Hi.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'll express my sadness for Councilwoman Cheryl Munson. Also, I had came down with kind of a sickness over the weekend and was not able to prepare for my departmental update. And I just wanted to let you know, I'll be back at the next Commissioner meetings to provide one. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other department with an update at this point? Seeing none, move on to public comment. This is for items which are not on our agenda. We ask that speakers limit their talk to three minutes and let us know your name and whether or not you're a resident of Monroe County. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak Looks like we have a hand raised. Perhaps, no, I guess it's just the cursor on the monitor that we see. Okay. Seeing none, move on to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of minutes.
Move approval of the minutes for December 4th, 2024.
I'll second. Any comments or corrections? I think I sent a small one to Ms. Freeman. But with that, call for a vote on the approval of the minutes from December 4th, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, December 11th, 2024, and payroll, December 13th, 2024.
I'll second. And with that, we have Ms. Tremble to tell us about what's going on.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for December 11th, 2024 totals $1,844,114.60. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The fall 2024 settlement docket totals $100,801,268.41. And if anybody has any questions about that fall docket, you can just reach out to the auditor's office. And the payroll docket for December 13th, 2024 includes $1,539,624.70 in direct costs, and the remaining $655,169.69 were for indirect costs, for a grand total of $2,194,794.39.
Thank you. Comments or questions? I don't either. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, December 11th, 2024, and payroll, December 13th, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. I will note for the record that we have the Treasurer's report for October 2024. And with that, let's move on to new business.
I just want to make sure it's clear for the record that she read three dockets. One is the settlement docket. And did that vote also include approving that?
As far as I know, yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, for the, okay, for the claims.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, with that, note that we have the Treasurer's report for October 2024, and we'll move on to new business then.
Move to approve a termination agreement for medical director services. Fund name, health. Fund number 1159, in the amount of $13,200.
I'll second that. And we have Ms. Kelly with us.
So this agreement is essentially just due to the closure of the Futures Family Planning Clinic. So this is just terminating the services for the medical director, given that we no longer need those services.
Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I just want to point out that the amount listed here is not money that the county is paying back. This is money that we are saving, if I understand this correctly. So doesn't need to show up necessarily as negative, but I just want to point out that this is money that will not be released from county coffers. With that, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the termination agreement for medical director services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of Cassidy Electric Agreement for Light Fixer Replacements, LED Upgrades for the Monroe County Convention Center Parking Lot. Fund name ARPA, fund number 8950, in the amount of $6,800.
I'll second. And we have Mr. Kreider with us.
Richard Kreider, Building and Fleet. Good morning, Commissioners. Presenting three ARPA projects for you today for the Convention Center. The first is the light fixtures attached to the poles in the West Convention Center lot are older ballasted fixtures. This is a great opportunity to upgrade those to LED. This request is to accept the proposal submitted by Cassidy Electrical Contractors in the amount of $6,800 to replace 20 lot light pole fixture heads with new LED light heads in the West Parking Lot at the Monroe County Convention Center.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. I only want to say I appreciate this because I know that it's important that that area stays lighted, especially since there are a number of night events that go on at the Convention Center, and this is a safety issue, I believe, for people.
It is.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Cassidy Electric Agreement for Light Fixer Replacements, LED Upgrades for the Monroe County Convention Center Parking Lot. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of Cassidy Electric Agreement for Light Fixer Replacements, LED Upgrades for the Monroe County Convention Center Parking, oh, I'm sorry, that's what we just did. Move approval of Cassidy Electric Agreement for Light Fixer Replacements and LED Upgrades for the Monroe County Convention Center, not parking lot.
Correct.
Okay.
Fund name ARPA, fund number 8950, in the amount of $36,700.
I will second that.
All right, this request is to accept the proposal submitted by Cassidy Electrical Contractors in the amount of $36,700 to upgrade light fixtures throughout the Monroe County Convention Center with LED replacements, plus to add dimming controls for the new lighting and the conference rooms.
Comments or questions?
Again, on the inside, if you're taking like the escalator and stuff, when it's dark, it's a safety issue again. And so I think this is good.
And again, a lot of the light fixtures, they're the older ballasted. They still use some of the T-12 tube lights and that kind of thing. It's in need of an upgrade.
I don't want to make a pun, but I think at some point, maybe you will enlighten me as to what these things mean.
Sure.
But is there any public comment on this item?
Seeing none, call for a vote on the Cassidy Electric Agreement for Light Fixer Replacements, LED Upgrades for the Monroe County Convention Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of Bounds Flooring, Inc. Agreement for New Carpet Installation at the Monroe County Convention Center. Fund name ARPA, fund number 8950, in the amount of $27,857.94.
Second. Mr. Kreider again.
Thank you. This request is to accept the proposal submitted by Bounds Flooring, Inc. in the amount of $27,857.94 to remove existing carpet and replace with new carpet tile in both the Finch and Alcott Rooms at the Monroe County Convention Center.
Any comment or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. I think this will be really a nice compliment to what was done in there already, in both those rooms already. They look nice, but this will make it even better.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Is there any public comment on these items?
Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the Bounds Flooring, Inc. Agreement for New Carpet Installation at the Monroe County Convention Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. Thank you, Mr. Kreider.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Move approval of Smithville Telecom LLC Wi-Fi Agreement for Cars Farm Park. Fund name ARPA, fund number 8950, in an amount not to exceed $99,846.
I'll second that. And we have Ms. Whitmer here to talk to us about this item.
Yes, this is a, it's $75,150 in nonrecurring charges and $24,696 for a 36-month service fee for a total of $99,846. It'll get hotspot areas by Fields 9 and 11, a portion of Fields 1 to 4, indoor commons, and the caretaker's house, which is our day camp headquarters in group shelter. It is also part of the larger project that we're doing for the Cars Athletic Complex. And you will also have a change order coming next week, maybe for Musco Lights, because there's a lot of moving parts to this particular project. And we have to do particular things to the brand-new poles that were not in this contract, so we need to have it on the Musco contract. So, and there will be some overruns. We'll just, we'll make it work within our budget.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
I'm just pleased that this is moving ahead.
I think this is a very, very nice compliment to the turf fields that will be put into place out at Cars Farm Park. And I assume I've heard from at least one staff member that he thought this would be a very nice thing to add for the families who are out there often with a lot of soccer. So I appreciate both your efforts and that of your staff to get this done. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Smithville Telecom LLC Wi-Fi Agreement for Cars Farm Park. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Did you, did I hear you? Yes, okay. All right.
Thank you.
It's quite a day. Thank you, Ms. Whitmer. Next item.
Move approval of the MOU for Community Justice and Mediation Center, or CJAM. Fund name LIT, special purpose, fund number 1114, in an amount not to exceed $32,000.
I'll second. And we have Mr. Hartman here. And, hello, Liz, nice to see you.
Morning.
Morning.
Yes, I have two friends here with me from the Criminal, or the Community Justice and Mediation Center, Liz Grenette and Wyatt Lawson. I'll let Liz introduce Wyatt here in a second, but this is for the MOU to be considered to be signed.
Speak into the microphone, sorry.
By services to the young people we serve here in Monroe County through the Victim of Crime Prevention Program. It's been a valuable resource to our community to help kiddos understand a little bit about conflict resolution and victim harm. I'll let Liz speak more to that, but we hope you'll consider signing it. So, thank you.
Thanks, hello. And I just wanted to say thanks so much. And I wanted to read a quote to you from one of the teen participants, because I think it's a really great, give everyone a great understanding of the impact of why this is important funding and the fact that you've continued to support this program for so long. So I'll start with reading it. This is a teenage person who said, "It's had a big impact on why I look at things the way I do now. I don't see why I had the idea of, oh, that's not mine, but it looks nice. It could be. It seems wild to me now that I saw it that way. Now I look back and I think that was definitely ignorant of me. Hearing the victim say to me that I was somebody who had been plotting and somebody who was trained at stealing and had done this for a long while, I didn't want to be looked at like that as a person. It kind of ruins your self-esteem. Oh, wow, you see me like that? Maybe I am like that. Maybe I need to change. I would definitely say I was on that path. And if I hadn't gotten caught and gone through this program, I could have ended up doing worse. I want to be seen, that I'm not that person. I've changed and I'm better." And I think that's a pretty incredible thing for a teenager to come to that realization. So thank you so much. And I wanted to put a plug. Our training for our mediation, basic mediation and ressort of justice training starts January 28. You can go to our website, www.cjamcenter.org. Thanks to Sophia Travis Funding that supports scholarships for that program, and that's also been really important. And then the last thing I want to say, this is my last time before all of you. I'm going to be retiring at the end of the year. Wyatt Lawson, come up here, is our new executive director. He started last week. And I just want to say to Commissioner Jones and especially to you, Commissioner Githens, too, thank you so much for the service that you do. I've enjoyed getting to know you and working, you know, with you all through the years. And thank you so much. I'm so sorry to hear about Councilwoman Munson. That was a big shock, too. And the last thing I'll say, and I'll introduce Wyatt, is coming from Terre Haute, and you'll learn more about him. But one of the things that's also incredible is next year, we celebrate our 30th anniversary and the VORP program. And Commissioner Jones's mother, Lib Buck, was one of the original funders. So we're going to be highlighting our history. And then wonderful Wyatt here is going to be leading us forward. So I'll let Wyatt say a word or two, and then we'll be out of your hair.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm excited to kind of continue the work that Liz and Jeff have been doing in the VORP program, as of course, all of the other wonderful things that CJAM does. And I, of course, have to express my gratitude for Liz to welcome me to the CJAM team and getting me set up to really move us in the future. Thank you all.
Mr. Jones?
I just want to thank you so much, Liz, for all you've done for our community. I know that my mother would also be thanking you if she could be here. It's been a pretty amazing thing. And welcome. I'm so pleased that you will be taking over Wyatt eventually. When I retire, VORP is one of the things I'm hoping to look at, so.
I didn't think you were ever going to retire.
No, the plans are in the making.
CJAM plays a very, very important role in our community with a lot of programs, but certainly the VORP is pretty unique. And when we look at prevention with different things, this is a big, big part of it. So I appreciate all that you all have both initiated and are doing in our community. Is there any public comment on this? Before we end this, Liz, thank you for your many, many years of dedication. It would not have happened, many things in our community would not have happened without your drive and your dedication. Thank you. So with that, a call for a vote on the MOU for Community Justice and Mediation Center, known as CJAM. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of Indiana Department of Child Services Agreement, Amendment Number Four.
Second. And do we have Ms. Schmidt with us?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Oh, there, okay.
I would, I'd also like to express my condolences for Councilwoman Munson and on behalf of YSB. It's a very tragic loss. So I am just here today. It's a pretty easy amendment to our existing contract with DCS. They are not able to get all of the changes out by the 1st of January, so they have entered into an amendment that would extend our existing contract to February 28 of 2025. And then I anticipate the new 2025 contract that we'll come back in front of you with.
Thank you. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't think so.
This is very straightforward, so yes, I'm in favor of this. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Indiana Department of Child Services Agreement, Amendment Number Four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you.
Next item.
Move approval of the Rural Repair Contract Template, Fund Name ARPA, Fund Number 8950, in an amount up to $122,713.63. Will most likely be $87,509.94.
I'll second. Who's presenting this? Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, as I think we've all been aware of for the last few years, the end of this year is the deadline to obligate our ARPA funding. We have had this program where we do help individuals who meet certain qualifications to do some repairs on their homes, and it's been very successful. However, as we all understand, since COVID hit, getting, sometimes getting building materials and supplies in takes longer than we expected. And so what this agreement does, and what we're asking for today, is for you to authorize your Commissioners' Administrator to be able to execute these contracts for projects that are in the works. And we're kind of, we've already told the homeowner that we're going to support this project, but we need to get it under contract so we meet the obligation deadlines. Typically, what we've done is, hey, go get it done. You've shown us the quote, get it done. We'll go inspect it once it's done, and then we'll go ahead and pay the invoice for the vendor. That's not going to work in this situation because there's no real formal obligation of those funds that the federal government can see without a contract like this. This contract is similar to what we did with the SEPTIC agreement, where we've approved, well, you approved me to sign those off. So that's what we're doing here. We're just trying to make sure that the promises that we've made on what we're going to do can be completed. And this is just to provide the paperwork for the ARPA funding.
Thank you. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I'm just very pleased that we're able to do this.
And there were, again, claims even this week for some additional repairs that had been done, which was fabulous to see. Anything that you wanted to add, Ms. Purdy?
No, the only thing I would add is that, well, the vendors that we've been dealing with have been fabulous. I just want to say that. Also, we just have a handful of projects that remain outstanding. And this is what's going to cover those into the, so that they can ensure that they are completed by the end, by next year. And I just want to, again, say that I think this has been one of the most positive programs that you guys have been able to implement for our public. So I just want to say thank you.
Great. I agree. It is a fabulous program. Very, very unique.
Something that we've all been quite proud of. And helping people stay in their homes is really important.
Some of the stories that we've heard about this program have been pretty incredible. Some of the stories that we've heard about this program have been pretty incredible. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, a call for a vote on the Rural Repair Contract Template. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, two to zero. Now move on to Item K.
Move approval of INDOT Agreement for Eagleson Bridge Number 922 Replacement. Fund Name Cumulative Bridge. Fund Number 1135, in the amount of $9,619.60.
I think it's 50 cents?
Yes.
I'll second that with 50 cents. Ms. Ridge?
Yeah, this agreement is for some remaining design work for the Eagleson Bridge. INDOT paid 95% to probably 99% of the design of the bridge before we accepted the bridge in the project. We are entering the right-of-way phase at this time, the letting date for the project right now, 11/13/2025, but will probably be moved to a 2026.
Thank you. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the INDOT Agreement for Eagleson Bridge Number 922 Replacement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of DJ Taylor Realty Group PC for right-of-way services for that road Bridge 79. Fund Name Cumulative Bridge. Fund Number 1135, in an amount not to exceed $2,530.
I'll second that. Again, Ms. Ridge?
This is for acquiring right-of-way services for the replacement of Bridge 79 on that road. The bridge has been designed and we submitted the project actually for construction funds in the INDOT NOFA Notice of Funding Availability in December. So we should find out the status of that award in February, but that way we would already have right-of-way completed. And if it's awarded, then we would probably be able to get the construction of the project.
Great. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I don't have any. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, a call for a vote on the DJ Taylor Realty Group PC for right-of-way services for that road Bridge Number 79. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, two to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2024-60, amend traffic ordinance 86-09 and 86-06.
Second, again, Ms. Ridge?
Yes. This is to amend some traffic ordinances that was presented to our Traffic Commission Board and approved unanimously. 8609 is to delete the following 40 mile per hour location, Airport Road, State Road 45 to 1,000 feet east of Cave Road, to delete 35 mile per hour on Airport Road, 1,000 feet east of Cave to Garrison, to also delete 20 mile per hour school zone location on Rogers Street, which is Pargrave Place to Gordon Pike, and to delete the 20 mile per hour school zone when children are present locations, Gordon Pike, west of Rogers, Falcon, Clairview Estate, and Baywood Drive. And then amend 8609 to add the following 35 mile per hour location as the entirety of Airport Road, and then add the following 20 mile per hour school zone, Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 4:00 locations on the Gordon Pike, Wickens Street to Rogers, Rogers Street, Pargrave to Gordon Pike. And to delete the following stop location, Morse Creek Road, northbound for Stip Road, and amend 86-06 to add the following stop location, Stip Road for Morse Creek Road. The reason for the school speed limit zone changes is due to the reconstruction of that area with the new Fullerton Pike connection. So that way, they'll be in effect when that project's complete next summer. And then the reason for the Morse Creek Stip Road is due to the stormwater project that actually changed the configuration of that intersection.
Thank you. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones? I don't have any either. Certainly, public comment on these proposed amendments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Ordinance 2024-60 to amend traffic ordinance 86-09 and 86-06. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, two to zero. Before we start the next item, I want to point out that we may pause our meeting very briefly, well, maybe not quite so briefly, but to allow two of our interns to come and talk with us about the project. But, so I hope that that, okay, so 11:30 definite, okay. So maybe we won't need to. But with that, call for motion on the next item.
Move to approve Ordinance 2024-57 Humphrey Rezone.
Second, and I believe we have Ms. Crisilius with us.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. I have today a rezone request to the zoning map. This is the Humphrey Rezone Request from Estate Residential to Agricultural Rural Reserve. This is for one parcel, 4.59 acres, located in Section 32 of Perry Township at 630 East Empire Mill Road. The petitioners are Kaylee and Raymond Humphrey. The property owners are Christine and Raymond Humphrey. So on screen is the current zoning map showing that the property is owned as state residential with adjacent agricultural rural reserve, also estate residential, and some light industrial to the east. The property's owned, the light industrial to the east, is actually owned by the petitioner's family and is a family-run business. So the comprehensive plan identifies this area as being located within the Monroe County Urbanizing Area Employment. The Monroe County Development Ordinance, the County Development Ordinance, or CDO, has this property identified as agricultural residential 2.5, so AGR. It is essentially the new equivalent of the zoning that they're requesting, AGRR. So the intent of the rezone request is that the petitioner intends to pursue having an accessory dwelling unit, specifically a detached accessory dwelling unit. I've worked with the petitioners for some time, and their, the planning processes that they could pursue to possibly have a second dwelling are very limited, and this was the most reasonable, especially considering the draft zoning of the property. So the petitioner's intent is to be approximate to family for medical reasons and also be able to assist with the family business. Whenever we look at a rezone request, we, you know, do consider, does the property meet the height, bulk, and density requirements of the zoning ordinance for the zone that they're requesting? And this petition site does meet those minimum requirements. So on screen is a pictomics review from 2024 of the property. So the property is developed with a single-family residential home and two accessory structures. That accessory dwelling that they would be pursuing, if this was approved, would be located on the southern half of the property. The property is mainly slopes under 15% with plenty of buildable area, which is areas that are outside of setbacks, slopes over 25% or outside of any specific environmental concerns like carst features or drainage, specific drainage areas, or hydrologic features. There are just a couple of site photos. The property has access from East Empire Mill Road. There's, you know, a photo on screen of the current dwelling unit. If they, if this rezone request is approved, they will be pursuing that detached accessory dwelling unit, which does have its own standards under the current zoning ordinance and under the future CDO. There are likely will be a couple of variance requests that the petitioner would pursue if this is approved today. So on screen is looking south at the petition site with the area that they would be interested in developing with another home. So on screen is the petitioner's letter to the Plan Commission originally, explaining that they are, you know, desire to live next door, to assist with the business, and help care for the property owners due to health reasons. On the right side of the screen is a very rough approximation of where they'd want to build that accessory dwelling. So the Plan Commission heard this on November 19th of this year, and they forwarded a positive recommendation by a vote of six to zero. And the staff recommendation, we recommend approving this rezone request from Estate Residential to Agricultural Rural Reserve for the 4.58 acres. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Jones?
No, actually, I don't. This is quite straightforward, and I don't see any problems at all with it.
Now, the only, the only issue I had, and I raised it last week, was whether or not the, one of those additional buildings meets the side setback for the property. But if they have to go back through planning to be working on the issues related to the DADU, then I think that'll be taken care of, so. So at this point, do we have the petitioners present who would like to speak about this request? Please come to the mic, state your name, sign in, make sure we know that you're a Monroe County resident. And welcome.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Humphrey. Yeah, so we just wanted to be able to go for this rezone. We knew it was part of the CDO, but we weren't sure if it was going to pass first, so we went ahead and applied for the rezone ourselves. Like Ann had mentioned, my father-in-law was in a bad accident a few years ago, and he's now disabled and has some health issues. So the goal is to be closer to family, to be able to help take care of him, as well as help run the business that's next door.
That was pretty short and concise. So what will occur now is that we'll ask for public comment, both people who are in favor of and people who oppose this, and then you'll have a chance to rebut anything that we hear. So I hope that was correct, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, they each get 15 minutes.
Yes. So at this time, we'll ask if there's anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this rezone. That can either occur in person or online. If so, if you're online, please raise your hand. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this rezone? Seeing none, there's not anything really to rebut at this point, so, Mr. Cockrell, is it appropriate then to just call for a vote?
I think that's.
Okay. So with that, I'll call for a vote on Ordinance 2027-57, the Humphrey Rezone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, two to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Move to approve Resolution 2024-41, 2025 Commissioner Meeting Dates and Resolution 2024-42, 2025 Appeals Hearings and Meeting Dates.
I'll second that. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones? My only comment is that the Commissioners' meeting will be moved to Thursday morning next year, but I assume that that's something easily done, so, yes. Is there any public comment on this item?
At that, the meeting is going to be moved to Thursdays at 10:00, and then the appeals hearings are moved to 3:00, 3:00 PM. And I'll be sending out a notice to all of our department heads because there's a change in process for them.
But there was no change, from what I read, there's no change in, like, when items are to be submitted for the following week and things like that?
No.
Correct. Okay. Is there any, any public comment now on this? Seeing none, a call for a vote on Resolution 2024-41, the 2025 Commissioner Meeting Dates, and Resolution 2024-42, the 2025 Appeals Hearing Meeting Dates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, two to zero. I'd like to ask Ms. Purdy, will the two interns be coming then back to our work session? Or, okay, so we'll be okay. All right, with that, I believe we have a couple of appointments.
Yes, I would, can we do both of them together? Okay. I'd like to move that we appoint Susan Hingle to, oh dear, I've forgotten what.
Monroe County Fire Protection District?
Fire, yes, I'm sorry. And Max Smith to the Opioid Settlement Allocation Board.
I'll second that. And I point out that the appointment for Mr. Smith will run through December 31st of 2026. Ms. Purdy, do we have a date for Ms. Hingle's, the length of her appointment? Do we know?
Not off the top of my head.
Sorry, I forgot to ask. Lauder Myers to get that for us before we came in here today. Got the name. And the board, yeah. But can we take care of that later, or?
I think typically they would be for two years, so if it's anything different than that, we'll bring.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, call for a vote on the appointment of Susan Hingle to the Monroe County Fire Protection District Board, and for Max Smith to the Opioid Settlement, Opioid Settlement Allocation Review Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, two to zero. Oh, here comes Mr. Lauder Myers. We can get this settled right away. Oh, that's for the Monroe County Fire Protection? Okay.
Yes, so Susan Hingle's term will be for four years until 12/31/28.
Does that take care of it, Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Okay, we're good then. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to announcements. Like to make sure everyone knows that the Commissioners have scheduled a public hearing for the County Development Ordinance for December 18th, 2024, here in the Nat U Hill Room at 5:30 PM. There's still free COVID testing available at the Monroe County Health Department at 119 West 7th Street, as well as the Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. Hoosier Hills Food Bank is accepting non-perishable food items, no glass please. And the Courthouse Rotunda, this will be here at least through the end of the year. There's a lot of need in our community, so if you're able, please drop something off. Monroe County CASA Training will begin January 21st, 2025, and run through February the 20th of 2025. The trainings will be Tuesdays and Thursday evenings from 5:30 to 8:30. Anyone interested should have their application in by January the 10th, 2025. For more information or to fill out an application, you can go to monroecountycasa.org or call We are accepting applications for a number of our boards and commissions. If you're interested, please go to co.moneroe.in.us for more information or to fill out an application. We continue to hold virtual office hours each month, six times. If you're interested, again, those are listed on our calendar at the county website. We continue to hold blood drives in conjunction with the American Red Cross. They're being held at Ivy Tech. There's one this afternoon from 1:00 to 6:00, and on Friday from 10:00 to 3:00. There's also one January the 8th from 1:00 to 5:00, and Thursday, January the 9th, from 1:00 to 7:00. If you wish to make an appointment. If you wish to make an appointment, please go to redcross.org. There's anticipation of possible snow later today, I understand, and so people who are interested in signing up for the Monroe County Alert Notification System, and that's for all weather and health-related emergencies and updates, please, again, go to our county website, co.monroe.in.us. If people are in need and need assistance for rent utilities, I'll remind them that they can contact their township trustee for that assistance. And a list of the township trustees and their phone numbers and email addresses can be found in each of our minutes and on our website. With that, do you have any other announcements? No, I don't. I don't either. And so we will adjourn this meeting. The next Commissioners' meeting will be next Wednesday at 10 o'clock here in the Natu Hill Room. That'll be December 18. We do have two items on our work session for later. It's now 10:57. Should we come back at 11:15? That work for everybody? Okay. Thank you, one and all. See you soon.